Ms. Bozeman, I'll put this jacket on just for you.
Thank you. We haven't seen you all year, okay?
Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the January 7th, 2021 organizational meeting of the Trotwood Madison Board of Education to order. Ms., actually, if we can have a pledge of allegiance, please, led by Madam Vice President Bozeman.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Scares?
Present.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Here.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Ms. Allen, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Scares?
Yes. All right, down to section two. We will have election of officers, beginning with the election of Board of Education president. May we have a nomination, please?
I would like to nominate Myra Bozeman for our president.
I'll second.
All right, all right. Looks like we have a motion and a second for Ms. Ms. Bozeman to be president of the Trotwood Madison Board of Education. Ms. Allen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. I'm sorry. It was me. I made the nomination. Denise Moore made the nomination.
Well, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Scares?
Yes. Congratulations, Mrs. Bozeman.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Bozeman passes! Okay, I can swear you in, okay, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay, you'll repeat after me.
Okay.
Let's see.
Do I need to raise a hand or anything?
We want to elect the vice president at the same time, so they-
Well, we could. We can do it together, right?
Yeah, let's just do it all together.
Okay, let's go from there then. Go right ahead, Mr. Scares.
Right, can we have a nomination for vice president Trotwood Madison Board of Education?
I nominate Mr. Norman Scares.
I'll second.
Any objections?
You're gonna have to behave yourself. Put that out there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Scares, go ahead and call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
Yes. Ms. Ms. Moore?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Scares?
Yes. All right, we'll have the swearing in and our new president will take over from here.
Your meeting is theirs. You've saved the whole meeting. It's still yours.
Well, let's get you sworn in.
What I want you to do is, I want you guys to hold up your hands, okay, because it's it's kind of two oaths, but I'm just gonna make it into one oath, okay? And when I say, just repeat after me, but insert your name, okay?
Denise, did we change from having the treasurer do the swearing in?
Uh, yes. Yeah.
Okay. We just changed-
Well, yeah, usually that's the way it really should have always been, Ms. Jeter Freeman. And we just didn't do it that way, because this is peer-to-peer.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, the treasurer also swears us in.
Uh huh, yeah.
But he said other boards also have another member swear you in?
Well, they have the previous and prior president, because my term just ended like this second, as soon as I swear Ms. Bozeman in. So the sooner I can do that, the better.
We didn't have any discussion on it, and so it had been traditional, and it was also what we do at CTC, so for me, I thought that was the normal practice, so-
Yeah, no, no worries whatsoever. No worries, okay? Ready? And you guys just insert your name and repeat after me. I-
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 A. Bozeman.
Norman J. Scares.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support-
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will-
I will faithfully-
And impartially-
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties-
Discharge my-
Discharge my duties.
As Ms. Bozeman, president-
As president.
Mr. Scares, as vice president-
As vice president.
Of the Board of Education-
Of the Board of Education.
Of Education.
In and for the said-
In and for the said.
Trotwood Madison City School District-
Trotwood Madison.
Madison City School District.
Montgomery County, Ohio-
Montgomery County.
County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance-
And in accordance.
In accordance.
With laws now-
With laws now.
Laws now.
In effect and hereafter-
In effect and hereafter.
Hereafter.
To be enacted during my continuance-
To be enacted-
Enacted during my continuance.
In said office-
In said office.
And until my successor is chosen and qualified.
And until my-
Until my succession is chosen and qualified.
Okay, congratulations, Madam President, Mr. Vice President. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so does the president take over at this point, or do I finish out the organizational meeting?
You finish it.
Yes.
Yeah, you finish it.
All right, all right, all right. Point number three, organizational businesses. Organizational business. Uh, we have established dates, times, and locations of meetings for 2021-22 school year. Are we voting on these individually, or this is gonna be like a consent agenda?
It's like a consent agenda. You you vote on them all at one time.
All right, perfect. Uh, establish a servants fund for the Board of Education in the amount of $20,000, adopt a standing authorization for 2021 calendar year, renew membership to the Ohio School Boards Association for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st of 2021, renew membership of the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. Also renew the membership of, uh, renew the membership to the National School Boards Association for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. May I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Scares, excuse me. I misunderstood your question. I thought you meant all of the dates, so each one of these are has an action related to it, so it should be separate, so-
Okay.
My bad on that.
No problem. Uh, under organizational business, A, may I have a motion to approve established dates and times and locations of meetings for 2021-22 school year?
Moved, second.
It's properly moved and seconded. Uh, any, any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Uh, let it be establish a service fund for the Board of Education in the amount of $20,000. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, any questions? Um, I do have one, but I I think it's a, it's an easy one. Are we, um, transferring over any carryover balance to the service fund as previously discussed?
No, we're not.
Okay. I thought we we were gonna start doing that maybe two years ago.
I know we discussed that, but normally that's not a a routine practice to do that, because the law says it's a maximum of $20,000 for the service fund.
Correct, a maximum of $20,000 that we can appropriate, but if we don't use it all in the in in that given year, then that appropriation is added to what's left over.
So-
We have not been doing that?
No, so I I'm I'm, I guess I'm in disagreement with what you're saying. ORC says the maximum that we can have for a service fund any any particular year is $20,000. So if we carried it over, it would be more, it would be outside of the $20,000 maximum that ORC calls for.
Uh huh, yep. Mr. Scares, every year, if we don't use it, we lose it.
Okay.
Uh huh.
All right, any other questions? All right, Ms. Allen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. D, or excuse me, C, uh, adopt standing authorizations for 2021 calendar year. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Ms. Allen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Uh, D, to renew the membership to the Ohio School Boards Association for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. E, to renew the membership to the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move. I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Motion passes. F, to renew membership to the National School Boards Association for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Appointments. Uh, the very first one is A, um, a liaison to the city of Trotwood. There are two positions there that need to be filled.
I'll do it again. Uh, I would like to be one of those representatives, please.
And I would also like to be one.
All right, Ms. Moore and Ms. Freeman, to the city of Trotwood liaison. Do we need to- Are those just appointments?
They're appointments.
They're just appointment.
They're just- They're just appointments.
All right, so Ms. Moore and Ms. Freeman to the city of Trotwood liaison. A district leadership team, B, we need two appointments there as well.
I'll stay on the district leadership team.
And I will also-
Wonderful. Mrs. Bozeman and Ms. Freeman to stay on the district leadership team. Uh, finance committee, uh, we need two people there. I would actually like to stay there, if possible.
I can stay there.
Sure?
You act like that hurt, Vanessa. I mean, Ms. Freeman.
You didn't have so much information. No, I'm kidding. I'm good.
All right, we we have those appointments. Um, also to the Miami Valley CTC Board of Education, uh, to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2022.
So I'm still on it.
Because you're still in your term.
Yeah, yeah. That was just for information only.
Okay, uh, give me a second. My technology cut out on me. My, uh- What is E? I'm sorry, I can't pull it back up fast enough.
What, what, what question, Mr. Scares?
Uh, E, is there an E on board committee liaison report?
National Alliance of Black School Educators.
Yeah, and I'd like to stay there as the representative.
All right, there's only one there, correct?
Yes.
I'm trying to put my, I'm trying to pull my agenda back up, if, uh, guys forgive me. Of all the time, for my technology to fail, it would be today.
Can we start to pull up the agenda with the meeting? To have the-
So, so, uh, Mrs. Freeman, Mrs. Jeter Freeman, you can pull up under your content tab. Um, you can see the the, um, document that's attached, so you could pull that up as we're speaking.
Okay, I didn't know if we could pull it up on the meeting screen for the meeting.
I see what you're saying, okay. Okay, okay, yes, okay, I understand.
Thank you.
All right, I'm almost there, guys. All right, so we have the National School Boards Association Lia, uh, National Alliance, rather, uh, school, uh, black school educators representative. We also need F, National School Boards Association Liaison, NSBA. Not everybody jump at once.
I'll do it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore.
No, I want to thank Ms. Jeter Freeman and Ms. Bozeman for carrying the torch on these ears.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore. Um, NSBA Black Caucus.
I want to stay.
All right. Um, OSBA legislatively liaison, I would like to stay there.
Okay, and is there anybody else who would like to be an alternate? I'm with Mr. Scares, but if somebody else wants to do this, they can?
I would like to do that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bozeman.
Was that for the Black Caucus?
No.
Or legislat-
Oh, the legis-
Liaison?
Liaison.
Oh, okay, so it'd be, okay.
Okay, it used to be me and Mr. Scares.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Um, OSBA Southwest Region appointed, I think that's, um, you're still, you're still in your term there, correct?
I am. I think I have this year and next year, and then someone else can apply for that.
Okay. Also with OSBA Student Achievement, you're, um, and you're, you're still in your term.
They actually changed the rules for that, so, um, I think they only have their, um, members that they had at the beginning, and now they, um, yeah, so changed the rules on that, so I'm-
So how do we- Well, are you, are you still in your term or no?
They need to appoint a liaison, though, so it could be any one of us. They're just not appointing anymore.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Ms. Freeman, you-
Any of us can be the rep at any point in time.
Yeah, so anyone that want to can take that.
I'd like to try if it's, if nobody else wants it, okay? Yeah, all right. Ms. Freeman, I'll be calling you.
You won't need to. You're good, but okay.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so OSK, OSBA Urban School District Advisory Network.
Um, I'd like to stay there.
Normally, they invite us all to those.
They do.
Yes. All board. Because every time I'd be on, they would have all of our name tags there, so-
Yeah.
Dr. Cosby, uh, right.
Yes, and and I think it's maybe we've always had it on there as a report point-
Right.
If there was any report, but no, we are all very much engaged in that advisory network.
But we can have one person, so then, no, yeah, yeah, I think-
Ms. Ms. Jeter Freeman, you go to a lot of those, and, um, we can, we have one person, but we can have two. We can have, I I'd like to stay, and if somebody else wants to join me, that would be fine.
Yeah, for that one, some of them, the whole board attend. That's what I'm saying. They changed the format.
Uh huh, for reporting purposes. Yes, I think then who's gonna take, take notes and report out. Okay.
All right, so, so do we have somebody or no?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, all right. And, uh, L, Policy Committee, we need two representatives there.
I'd like to stay on policy.
Um, I would as well. I would as well. Uh, Trotwood Madison Edu, uh, M, Trotwood Madison Educational Foundation.
I'll stay on that.
How many reps are there? Is this the one?
Um, just the one. Did you want to be on that?
I don't, no ma'am. No, ma'am. Um, okay, so we have Ms. Bozeman there for Trotwood Madison Educational Foundation, and the last one in is the Trotwood Madison Parent Engagement Liaison.
I'd like to stay involved on that one.
All right.
Oh, Mr. Scares, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It it's a new subject matter, but it deals with committees, so if it's any of those.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was anything, if Mr. Andrews wanted to take anything, or, or, I didn't want to-
Is he on, Mr. Andrews?
Um-
I know your work schedule makes it different.
Yeah, and and I I just, I didn't want to, I I hate to beat the eyeball and all that kind of thing, because everybody else is pulling a lot of weight, but I'm, I'm weary about getting, uh, making a commitment and then getting stuck with everything that I'm doing out at, uh, out at, out at, uh, out at the base right now, so I'm kind of hesitant, but I I feel bad about it, because I feel like I'm not pulling my my share.
Now, and I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have something you wanted, that's all.
I appreciate it. Okay.
Yeah.
To some degree, we're all parent engagement liaisons.
Yeah, yeah, uh, to some degree, we're all of everything. At times, okay? Um, one thing I wanted to ask the board, uh, we had a discussion, and it's, we've been talking about this for a while, and we always ask if there are any new committees that we think that might benefit the district. One of the committees that I would like to just, um, propose, and we don't have to propose it now, because Superintendent, um, mentioned that we would eventually have this in the district, we just don't have it now, but when we get the Trotwood Madison District-wide Recognition and Acknowledgement Committee together, I'd like to be a liaison on that. So, Dr. Cosby, when that happens, um, you let us know, and then we would put it on our agenda as an appointment, Mr. Scares.
All righty, no problem.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Allen, would you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares, you have to say.
Oh, we have, motion passes.
Meeting adjourned.
We are adjourned. See you in two minutes.
See, it's a little different when you're working, right? All right, thanks.
Congratulations, Ms. Bozeman. You're welcome.
Yeah.
I said we're the only two where we can see our faces, so I'm like, oh.
The camera, get me rolling, because I'll get back on.
I didn't realize it was the same invite.
Yeah, I went out too, Dr. Cosby, and I couldn't find it.
Ms. Moore, I believe we're ready to go. We we are still, uh, still live, so whenever you're ready.
Okay, it's it's President Bozeman now.
Oh.
Okay. Just so you know.
Like writing twenty twenty on your check, I gotta give you. So whenever you're ready.
Good evening, I would like to call to order the January seventh, twenty twenty-one Trotwood Madison Board of Education meeting, which is a live stream via YouTube in accordance with COVID nineteen recommendations. The mission of the Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public-community meeting. Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Judith Freeman?
You think Vanessa thought there was another link? I'll call her.
She may have, because I did.
I did too, I'll call, I'll call her. You can finish, I guess.
Go ahead. Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Scares, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
So my. I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, um, it's just two um, little things, we are on the personnel agenda.
Okay.
There's a name change, and we're having to use a substitute lifeguard. Our lifeguard who was initially approved is unavailable for Saturday's meeting.
Okay. So, I think we received um, that change as a hand-carried item, and so we're gonna be using that information opposed to the information that we currently have on the agenda.
Yeah.
Placed under number five, with the superintendent's item, and we replaced under C, Subject C, which is where the current item is, correct?
Yeah.
Uh huh, are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? None, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Bozeman?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries, okay, looks like we are now two presentations, do we have any presentations this evening?
No.
No presentations, okay, moving on to the Treasurer's Report, Ms. Allen.
Yes, I have two um, items to present to you this evening for information. The first one is under three A, is the approval amendments from the December third, twenty twenty, and the December seventeenth, twenty twenty meetings, again, that was for information only. Um, three B is a, uh, an update to the school employees' retirement system pickup plan. Um, what, um, the auditor, state auditors um, asked for our most recent update for SERS, and the, um, I had to um, reach out to school employees in Columbus. Their latest form we had was, they had, was a very, very old form, I think it was nineteen eighty-six, and so I figured we needed to update that, and so the form that I am proposing this evening includes myself, um, and I'm under, um, school employees' retirement, and then it also includes the directors, and um, also I added the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, because there was a name change. He was a director, he is a director, but it's a name change, so I wanted to include that, so we could cover everything. And so that was the two um, forms that was, were updated, nothing's changed, but it's just a formality.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And that's all I had this evening.
Thank you very much, next we have the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Cosby.
Okay, and the things I have for information only as well, um, my first is A, approval of student activity, purpose statement, and budget. B is approval of a donation from Twin Tig Incorporated, and C is approval of the personnel agenda.
Okay. Are there any questions, um, I forgot to ask for Ms. Allen's or for Dr. Cosby's? Any questions at all, since these are for information, this is the time to ask any questions you might have or need for clarification.
I have one question, um, but it was to what we previously voted on in regards to the lifeguard, that's, so we vote on that, because we need him for Saturday, right?
Yes, it's a substitute lifeguard.
Okay, I didn't wanna, wanna make sure we weren't voting on the entire personnel agenda, then, um, just, just those two hand-carried items.
Yes, they're, they're for information, yes.
They're for information?
Right, so they'll be on the next agenda with the personnel.
Okay, because we voted.
No, you just voted for me to be able to tell you about them, that I was changing the agenda for next time.
Okay. Okay.
Are there any other questions for both, either the Treasurer or for Superintendent? Okay, moving on to discussion items and updates, I guess, Dr. Cosby, you're still on for that? First, we have the reentry plan.
Yes, I'd gotten comfortable thinking I was done, right? Okay, so the reentry plan, um, as it, the board members know, on our Saturday retreat, we will make that decision about how we plan to reenter and um, when, and the things that I wanted to share with you today, and to maybe if, if you wanted to do a little discussion about it, but I anticipate we'll do this primarily on Saturday, is what we will review and, you know, discuss at our meeting. So, things that will impact um, this decision will be the COVID status at this point, and that's in regards to, of course, the safety of our staff and students. We're gonna look at the implications associated with the COVID vaccination, for example, the timing of it, when we get it, you know, who, who will get it. Um, also, we'll look at how we're doing with our remote learning at this time, such as how is our student achievement? Um, what is our attendance like, what are the social-emotional concerns that we have associated with um, doing remote? Um, the next thing that we will take into account is that they do have some new rules for quarantining in schools, and so um, we will be discussing those things as well. So, pretty much, those are the things that um, I have, that I would like for us to take into account, discuss, and if you have something else, you know, of course, please let me know, and we will discuss that as well on Saturday.
Um, I have a comment, um, Madam President.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the Governor just tweeted that during the week of February first, we will begin to vaccinate our school personnel. Um, this week, we are sending forms to be signed by the superintendents, and we are asking them to agree to go back to full in-person or hybrid learning by March first. That is a condition of getting the vaccine, so I know you mentioned something, but he just tweeted this during our meeting, so by Saturday, maybe you can give us more information on all of that.
Sure, I will, I um, received a survey today and had to send it back in with a number of people who have any contact with their um, students, so that would be um, all employees and central office staff, and I think we sent in, our number was, if I'm not mistaken, around four hundred and twenty or thirty. Um, and on there, it did ask, um, do you have a plan to return in person? And so, you know, we, we are developing a plan, so I checked yes on that, but I, I, you know, had not heard what you shared.
Uh huh, yeah, it, there's a huge push for in-person learning, uh, full-time, uh, and that is really what the Governor's Office is indicating, however, hybrid is an option as well. Thank you.
Next, we have Superintendent's Goals, and Dr. Cosby, I'm not sure if you're talking about this, or if that is a board related sort of.
Well, one of the things that um, we have in, eh, as a part of our strategic plan, is the idea of transparency, so um, I was sort of asked and thought it was okay to give an idea about how, how I develop, you know, the goals, and they are based on our goals that are in the strategic plan, so the district goals. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea, they would definitely have to be fleshed out more, and you know, worked on as a team, you know, we would do that, but I wanted to sort of give a little bit of information, if that's okay. Okay, so um, I've come up with, we actually have six goals in our strategic plan. So I was looking at the first three goals, and so number one for me would be two, and these goals are gonna take longer than just the few months that are left in this year, you know, so, so they're a little long-term. But the first one um, is an instructional goal, it goes along with our Goal One, um, Section Four, which is high-quality assessments designed to meet the needs of all students. So what I would um, propose to do is to research, then train staff, and implement a more authentic way of assessing our student achievement. That way, we can um, be sure that we provide the correct interventions, as well as enrichments for our students as need be. So I would like to um, work on that. Goal Two goes along with our second um, goal, and our second goal on the strategic plan says we will provide academic and non-academic support to ensure opportunity and access to each and every student. And so I, I had said for that, um, one of the things listed was positive behavior sim- systems and prioritize increased access to learning environments for our students, so that's something I wanna write a goal around, is making sure that all of our students get um, the appropriate core content to prepare them for moving forward. And the third one um, is, deals with our Goal Three, and our Goal Three is that we will engage students, families, and community organizations as advocates and partners of equity, access, and positive results for our students. And the one that I want to um, work on on there is to increase the amount of communication and the quality of communication that we have with all stakeholders. So to basically enhance our social media presence, and to make sure that we're putting out, you know, good communication. So those are the three things that I'm gonna get together for my goals.
Sounds good, Moore, did you have any comments?
Uh, Madam President, um, I, um, re, re, uh, Dr. Cosby, you may wanna check your email, because um, I was sending you those cornerstone's, um, only about the what, I just wanna make sure she had the grab. In addition to that, um, I, I appreciate you sharing those goals, because what folks don't understand is a lot of times when the superintendent is asking staff to do something, and she's holding them accountable, it's important that everybody knows that we are holding her accountable, and she has goals that have to be met as well. So it's not just, we're just doing something to do it, is, there's a method to the madness, and, and there's a reason behind all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you, next we have virtual teaching, what works and what are the challenges?
Okay.
Lisa, is that mine, is that you?
Yes, yes, and uh, Board President Bozeman, and Board Members, and viewing audience, um, thank you for the opportunity to share how our virtual learning teaching is going. I'll say some of the things that are positive is teachers that have really embraced our instructional framework are doing very well, um, they have been engaged in hours and hours of PD, all the way from the summer, and it's been continuous. And one thing we did to try to really get feedback on what are the teachers saying, how do they feel they're doing? We did a survey this week and had great participation, and we just asked four questions. Um, we asked how they felt their students were performing in the virtual environment, and we gave them some targeted choices, such as my students are struggling, or learning on a limited basis, or they're completing assignments but need more support, and then the top two were students are adjusting well, making progress, or students are learning at high levels and engaged. So we asked them that, those questions about their students, then we changed the wording about them as an educator for the one hundred percent remote, we wanted to hear what they said. Then, because we did have a period of hybrid learning, we asked the same questions. So overall, um, and we did it from every building, so we could see what each building said, most of the teachers um, said they felt they were in the top three, their students were making progress, need more support, or they felt confident, some buildings had more of the high-learning responses than others. And so we were able to also allow them to leave comments, because we wanted to know details, and where they felt were most challenges were attendance and that SEL support, and I know uh, Mrs. Mallory is doing a lot with that, but they were worried about those kids that are just not getting on consistently and need those supports, so a lot of teachers were asking about more home visits and things like that, um, so, a lot of the teachers struggled, they said inconsistency when we switch back and forth from one format to the other, every time there's a change, it took a while to get the kids adjusted. And, and that's good for adults and everybody, so they were very concerned about that. Uh, because of the way our hybrid model went, a lot of them struggled with that. If they only had three kids in the class and the rest of the kids at home, uh, that was difficult. But I'll read some of their comments, because they all, every building gave some. Uh, one teacher said, I feel my instruction has been really effective and engaging for the students who are attending the Zooms and doing the assignments, but my concern are those that are not getting on. Another teacher said, um, I have been thriving this year, honestly, I feel I am doing some of my best teaching of my career. I have learned so many helpful tools for teaching, I really appreciate the PD. Many teachers said to us, they've had enough PD, because we were doing it every Friday, so they're, like, they like, they want some time to work on the plans and work with the tools, because there's so many things we've provided them, they're kind of overwhelmed, and they just need a break, so they told us they've had enough PD. Um, and some of them uh, felt, it, you know, the big, one person said, it's a difficult, it is a difficult time of adjustment, um, however, the biggest struggle was during the hybrid learning and teachers being split between two places, and so that was hard, um, hard on them. So a lot of details, I can share more Saturday, more on Saturday, uh, because they actually have, we have the survey open until tomorrow, so I'll pull some more comments, but we've got uh, well over twenty, twenty-five comments, responses from each building so far, so we'll just give another day for people that may not have responded yet.
Sounds great, okay, I'm looking forward to Saturday to hear all that information. Thank you, so that leads us right into um, the Board Retreat. Do you want me to talk about that, or do you guys have something to say about it? I don't know what all I would.
The one, the only thing is, um, everybody had input in this retreat, and um, I mean, it's just really great, because everybody put items for discussion and topics. So I, I know it's gonna be a great retreat, it's gonna be a full retreat, and we're gonna really delve deep on a lot of things that are going on in the district that we don't have time to discuss on these platforms, so uh, I'm looking forward to it, what, and it starts at nine AM, is that correct?
Looks like it's eight thirty, but we can start at nine.
You know what?
You definitely said eight thirty, but I'm happy to.
It's the board's pleasure. All right. Uh, but yeah, so again, there's a lot of content. So it, it may be better to start a little earlier so that we can get through it and people can have their Saturdays back.
Yeah, I agree. There's an awful lot of content. As, as I was looking through it, it does all seem very interesting and all things that we need to talk about. But yeah, it does seem like a lot of, of really great content and hopefully we can at least touch all, a little bit of all of it. Are there any questions at all about um, what we talked about, what Ms. Minor talked about or anything about the board retreat? Okay, moving on to treasurer's comments. Ms. Allen?
I just wanted to say Happy New Year to everyone. To hopefully 2021 is a lot better than 2020. So Happy New Year and we, and I just know we have a lot of work to do.
Absolutely. Thank you. Happy New Year to you too. Next superintendent comments. Dr. Cosby?
Okay, I, I have two things. Um, I'll start with wanting to let you all know that I did send a message out today to staff reminding them um, about being attentive to their students this week. Pretty much I'm talking about the incident that occurred yesterday and it's sort of been ongoing on Capitol Hill. And I know that their students are probably stressed about that and potentially there's conversations at home. They may want to talk to the teachers. So I did remind them that we have um, building level support. We have social workers. We have our school counselors and we have our restorative justice staff. So I asked them to be sure to reach out and to also remind us all that as we're getting stressed sometimes by these things that we need to take care of ourselves and find someone to, you know, speak with. And I reminded them of our um, employee assistance program if anyone needs that. I'm hoping and praying that this will all get better. Um, you know, and the um, inauguration will go off without a hitch. So that was one. The third one is much more um, positive. This happens to be um, School Board Appreciation Month. So I wanted to take the opportunity to show you all that you will be receiving a very nice certificate, everybody, for all the hard work that you do as school board members and um, school board officers. So I'll read one of them and know that everybody is getting it. The certificate of appreciation. This certificate is presented to, and I'm going to do Mr. Andrews, Michael Andrews at Triwood Madison City Schools in sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership and service to public schools. School Board Recognition Month, January 2021. So thank you all for all you do and it's nice that you're recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our board comments. First, we have Mr. Andrews.
Well, uh, pretty much uh, what Ms. Allen has said, um, Happy New Year and um, looking forward to this year being significantly better than last year. Um, based on all the things I've been reading and, and listening and learning about a lot of different things, uh, hopefully uh, as we finish this academic year, we'll also be finishing up with a lot of the uh, the really uh, crushing effects of this pandemic and we'll start to be able to see a uh, a, a way clear of that and get back to some kind of norm- normalcy. Um, and as our students are seeking advice and things on some of the things that have been happening, especially the really kind of a startling uh, a chain of events last night, uh, hopefully one of the things that can be um, uh, uh, mentioned to them is where they can uh, look for legitimate sources of information and insight on what's going on as opposed to uh, just, just uh, random uh, social uh, media outlets and things. But other than that, I'm looking forward to us uh, uh, getting everybody back in as we, as, as soon as we can as we can do that safely and just getting back to as close to normal as is possible as, you know, as, as much as we can.
Yeah, thank you so much. Next, uh, Ms. Judith Freeman.
Uh, welcome and Happy New Year to everyone. It's going to be a great year. We have a new president, a new vice president and a new Senate majority. So I am extremely hopeful um, for our country. Uh, even in, after the things that happened yesterday, but uh, there's still hope. So, um, yeah, it, it's going to be a good year.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Thank you. Um, Happy New Year. And I'd like to say congratulations, uh, President Bozeman and Vice President Scares. Uh, I think the country can take a, a page out of our book for a peaceful transition of power. We are setting the stage, all right? And it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful year. Uh, there are still so many unknowns. Um, the governor's making changes as, as we speak about how schools are going to operate, but I want to just say and acknowledge the leadership that we have in the district. Dr. Cosby, you've done a phenomenal job and your team have, they have been on top of everything and thank you for keeping us in the fold. So again, um, it's going to be a great year. Really excited, excited about Saturday and uh, everybody have a great evening. But I can't say that because I'm usually the last one. I'm sorry.
Vice President Scares, your comment?
Yes, first, uh, Happy New Year again. And thank you to my fellow board members for entrusting me with the uh, responsibility of serving as vice president. I hope I do a good job as, as good as Ms., Mrs. Bozeman did last year. The other thing I would like to say is I have not mentioned it in a, in a little while, but it is still very much in the forefront of my mind, especially um, considering yesterday's events that as, as educators, that we really use this as an opportunity to get the African-American history in our classrooms and use the ability that we have um, to make sure history is told the right way. Um, and hold those accountable, um, whether they be textbook creators. Um, eh, eh, whatever it is, using our, using what we have and who we are in this moment to make sure history is remembered the way it ought to be remembered. Um, and I don't think, you know, events like yesterday need to go down, um, you know, in history being told one kind of way. Um, so I, I really hope that we, we take that into consideration and, and really use our authority uh, while we have it to do just that. Lastly, not to beat a dead horse, but from when we voted on the, um, when we voted on the hand-carried item, I just want to be certain that eh, that we kind of do it the right way. I know you said we voted to add it to the agenda. But if that individual's going to be working on Saturday, we haven't actually voted on the contract. So would we be?
What happens is I, um, what is the term, Ms. Allen? I.
Early authorized.
And then you vote on him. Yes, I early authorized. So he's legitimately able to do his work on Saturday.
All right. Sorry for being a bummer.
Get used to this term, but when we don't do it, then so.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all I had. Thank you again very, very much. And it's going to be a wonderful 2021.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, um, as always, everyone said everything I was going to say, except I didn't, I mean, 2020 did provide us with a lot of challenges, but I didn't necessarily think it was bad. Um, a lot of challenges, but we did learn a lot. We did move ahead and we're going to continue to move ahead. We're, we're only, what? We were only a few days into 2021 and we had a lot of challenges, but we're still going to continue to move ahead. And so I look forward to all of those things. And as far as my new appointment as president, I am really deeply honored to know that my fellow board members found me worthy of such an important responsibility. And I will definitely uphold this post with the highest level of ethics and transparency. And I'm really eager to begin my, my job. So I'm, I'm happy to be here today. I'm even happier to be there tomorrow morning at eight thirty. Um, I know we had a back and forth about eight thirty or nine. Saturday. All right, Saturday morning. Saturday morning. And I only, I, because I'm going to stick with the agenda. I'm going to stick with what we had printed at eight thirty. So we're going to stick with the eight thirty to one. If we get out early, great, even better. But we're going to stick with what the time, what time we had printed, which was eight thirty. So again, thank you for every, for being here tonight. Happy New Year. 2020 has some challenges. I wouldn't call it bad. You know, challenging, yes. 2021 has already started out challenging, but it's going to be great and we're going to move through it and do great things. Um, if there are no other questions, I would like to entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes per ORC 121.22G5. And seconded. Ms. Allen, you call the role.
Yes. Ms. Moore? Yes. Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Judith Freeman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes. Action will be taken? Looks like, looks like it says action will be taken on here. So um, we will be, action will be taken. And it is six oh one. So we will move into executive session. Thank you.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, there's a, um, separate.
There's a link for that, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Freeman.
Yes, sir.
While it's just you and me.
Okay.
I know I've been, well, I know I've been bugging you. What about that character?
You know, I thought about you, I just couldn't get around to it. But, yeah, I was gonna try and get you, so the new year is here, so you're still on the list.
Okay.
All right. Hey, who are waiting now?
President Bozeman, we just declared the meeting out because we were supposed to vote.
Oh, okay, well, we're.
No, I just had the, and the, and the medical, we're supposed to declare it out, we're fine.
Yeah, we're good.
We'll just keep practicing.
Ay, 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 ay. You left us hanging, Myra, you left us hanging.
All in favor.
All right. All right, so now it's time to do, uh, Mr. Andrews here, who else is waiting? Is there a motion to adjourn the work set?
I know.
I second.
They're probably moved and seconded. Ms. Allen will call the roll. Gladly, uh, Mrs. Jeter Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman.
Yes.
And Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
See you on Saturday.
We had a regular meeting, organizational meeting, executive session in an hour. Go team.